Hey guys, James Mann from Married to Health here. I'm going to an OC vector control town hall meeting in Mission Viejo. I just got here, I'm running late, rushing with the kids, you know how it is. This is what's going on, so this is them right here. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District. So, this meeting is to discuss aerial spraying of a toxin known as DUET. The toxin, we're gonna be discussing and learning about it, so I'll be live tweeting. So when this video gets posted on YouTube, probably sometime tonight or tomorrow, I'll link my Twitter and the hashtags I used, so you guys can check it out. I'm gonna walk into the meeting, I don't know if they'll let me film in the meeting, but we'll find out, and I'll see. Okay guys, so just a quick preface to this video. My battery ran out, so I wasn't able to take great video. Also, I'm sitting kinda far away, but I tried to shoot most of it, give you little clips. Hope you enjoy. If I can find out more about this disease, how it works, and the risks that exist associated with it. So, the first thing to understand about Zika virus infection symptoms is, most people who get infected with Zika virus have no symptoms at all. It doesn't make you sick. So, they get infected, they're infected with the virus for a period of time, but they have no illness at all. For the people who do have illness due to Zika virus, what symptoms do they have? Well, another one is rash. So, as, you know, as a physician, as doctors, you think of, you get a virus, the first thing you think of is fever. And yeah, you can get fever from Zika virus, but not much. So when people talk about, you know, there's a tremendous amount of Zika illness going on in Brazil, and people are saying, or thinking, "Well, maybe I shouldn't go to Brazil because of Zika." Well, you know, there's dengue there, there's chikungunya. These viruses habitually will make you sick. We will see people in the hospital because of dengue, we will see people in the hospital because of chikungunya. Zika, the initial notice though, very unusual to make you feel, to make you feel seriously ill. Now, the big question that we're all wrestling through, and that they're learning more about is microsepti, associated with Zika infection. And this is, this is something that's important. And, you know, really, and I think you all know, that it's really only been three or four months that we've been aware of this reality, and so the World Health Organization, the CDC, and a lot of researchers in Brazil are really trying to use as much work as they can to figure out what the risk really is. We know for sure, we're beyond the question, that if a pregnant woman is infected, she can get Zika infection, and she can pass the virus to baby, passing the virus. We know that. We know that certain amount of time, that the fetus will have a illness associated with it, and it causes brain injury, and that can be long term. The big question, really, two big questions. How likely is it to happen? And at what point during your pregnancy are you at this? Those are the two things. As far as how likely, the latest study that they looked at, and really, this is again, information that is coming out week to week, is last week, the best estimate they had from an outbreak in Tahiti where they had a large number of cases of Zika, is that for pregnant women who aren't infected, there is about a 1% chance that her fetus, her baby in turn, will be infected with neurologic illness. Now, you can look at those two ways. And one is that, if you are a pregnant woman who's infected, you have a 99% chance that there's no issue. On the other hand, if you are a pregnant woman thinking, "I would like to avoid the risk of this," I think it makes all the sense in the world. I think we know enough to say that, yes, there is a risk associated with it, and it is not a minimal risk, so pregnant women accordingly should take, should take the caution.
It's a matter of boots on the ground to inspect and treat for these injured mosquitoes, the egg or the pupal stages. Control of adult mosquitoes around infested homes and neighborhoods. And it can be as simple as a can of Raid that homeowner can use, or as you can see in the photograph bottom right, we have a backpack and a sprayer that you have, though the public's permission, to treat their back or front side nerves. And of course, it would be hearing this a lot, educating the public of what they can do. One of the things is that bottom left photograph, scrubbing a container with a detergent, bleach and water solution, filling these edges. What we're asking of the public is, some different behavioral patterns around your home, and how you water your plants, and containers you might add to hold water. So, avoid overwatering lawns and plants where water can collect, where mosquitoes can breed. Placing plants in non-water holding containers. If you have a little saucer underneath that pot, you water the plant, that small amount of water in that saucer, it's an excellent place for mosquitoes to breed, the invasive Aedes, and some of our native fulex mosquitoes as well. For people to be so vigilant, to dump, drain, all stagnant water on their property, make sure all of your windows and door screens are in good repair. Mosquitoes can get through the smallest opening, they'll detect you inside the house, and go for any time to open the can. When you're outside, and where mosquitoes come in, and again, we're showing again, Raid Yard Guard is something that you can buy yourself off the shelf, and safely using your yard.
That's debatable.
Well, let's go on to some of the resources that you do find mosquitoes. This one on the left is pretty extreme, I realize. But any place that will hold, give a small amount of water, shows on the right, we discovered at home, here in the city, that apparently, they have their drinking waters, and throwing the cats out, irrigation, and some of the summer monsoon waters, they regularly see their shinside little cat. And we will have lifestyle changes. These mosquitoes are day biting. They're very aggressive, they bite people and pets, they'll make the yards for us unlivable. People that live in the east, if you have friends, tell you just how miserable it is. They do increase the risk for a dengue, to be immune, to be bitten by mosquitoes, possibly even get a fever. Not the park room for our pets, they're good vipers for all these species. They are difficult to control as an agency, that's why we really need your help. If everybody would take care of any standing water on the property, we wouldn't have to do anything. But unfortunately, that's just not so. So, the control does fall to the homeowners, and I'm gonna say it again, about keeping water outside, emptying out containers, used containers, making sure they're picked up so they don't collect water, and using adult mosquito aerosols on your property to control mosquitoes. Now, I'm gonna change gears a little bit. We control mosquitoes all the time, Orange County. We have a lot of native species in mosquitoes, and the majority of our program, 99%, of us, focused on the injured species, the larva mosquito form. It would be in the swimming pool, or just a number of sites like that to unload. So, it's really a resource reduction of standing water, our use of biological control of this mosquito bit. We use a number of microbials that are safe products, they're registered to use in organic crops. We use some of these IGRs, which mimic the hormones of the mosquitoes that don't develop properly, with methicrine, with hydroxyphenol, and we have some lightweight distillate oils that we put on certain waters to sedate the mosquito water. Only 1% of the control work we currently do is for adult mosquito, and that's all in the marshlands.
What is adult mosquito?
Adult mosquito control, it does sound better to say adult mosquito control, to spray a binder or salt from the back of the truck, we call adult mosquitoes. And again, public education is really our biggest help to get this information out. Talk a little bit about adult mosquito control. Starting on the graph in the upper left, you have mosquitoes that we weren't able to control, say a backyard situation we don't know about. Mosquitoes hatch out, they'll continue to live for a few weeks, they're fighting birds that have West Nile virus in this case, and the mosquitoes then will transmit to other birds, and then to hatching fumes. And so these older mosquitoes, the longer they live, the more chance of picking disease there is. We can do some larva sighting. This does not kill these same adults, and will prevent their offspring, if we find them, from developing into adults. But we bring adult asiding, adult mosquito control into the mix, and that's where we really stop these same mosquitoes from becoming a disease, transmitters of disease. So that's the theory behind adult mosquito control, using, if it's the backpack, such as you see here on the left, truck mounted fogging in the center, or if it goes to your aircraft, and you got such disease in the county, you may have to report to the plane while you're up in the air.
We won't stand for it, we're not gonna have aerial spraying harming our children, sorry.
Okay, now, the Journal of American Medical Association has published an article on DUET, which is a product that we're looking at. This product has been used safely since 1995.
Safely? Yeah!
Drink it!
And contains the two active ingredients which are antinarrating. Now, let me highlight this.
A lot of people in here don't use Raid because they've already got health issues.
You have questions coming up, please let me finish.
Yes, please quit saying "safe," sir, that makes me very sick. It's not safe.
This is a journal.
Don't forget the third ingredient too.
Studies humans and sprays on show no evidence of insecticide exposure. Spraying has been shown to reduce transmission of disease from mosquitoes, because some of these diseases, like West Nile, can be very serious, very strong risk of being in a spray area is outweighed by the benefits of significantly.
Our children are not outweighed by anything.
The risk of serious disease from mosquitoes. Where is the problem? Okay, I'm gonna talk about this product, DUET, that we're considering. It's an adult mosquito pesticide, DUET has been used safely for 20 years. DUET is effective at very low rates, is what we're considering using it at, at 1 ounce per acre. DUET biodegrades rapidly in the presence of sunlight, macroorganisms working on it. The methods and materials, mosquito and vector control district uses are highly regulated by federal, state, and the local levels.
Was that tested on humans?
Okay.
Pregnant women?
Now, let me continue please.
We're being tested on right now.
Wrap up of the summary of my talk. So, it's the strong core of surveillance, looking at all the different ways that we can first protect the mosquitoes, in special sites, the control of mosquitoes, larva mosquitoes in the underground storm graves, is that center picture, gross of plenty, and public education, which is helping exercise and work the best. But that is my last slide, and I'm gonna pass this on to the chair, and just gotta talk about outreach. Outreach program, we do a lot of outreach, a lot of affairs, and presentations, and working with the local communities, and also with the media to publicize our activities as much as we possibly can. In addition to, why are you here tonight, for Zika virus and invasive Aedes mosquitoes, very, 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 very important that we...
I could speak over and answer.
And so it's really important that we stress this partnership. This is a public and private partnership. We call it to share the responsibility of vector control, and no time in our history has it been worth seven as this.
Matt's on my PDA for the subject team, as it should depend on the medical director section, theology. Will you do it again? Here, back here.
Oh, there you go, that's better.
Really close.
Is there something that's been explained towards, that we're presentable, so we know specifically, if we can address comments or...
Yeah, I'm sure we can, I'm sure we can figure it out. Okay. So, my name is Matt Zon, I am medical director for active epidemiology for the Orange County Health Department.
My name is Larry Shaw, Director of Operations, Orange County mosquito and vector control district.
And I'm Jared Zee, Director of Communications, Orange County mosquito and vector control district.
Robert Cummings, Scientific Director, Orange County mosquito and vector control district.
Okay, so we go through these questions that they were receiving, this match here. First question is, what's the current method of OC vector use to combat this issue? And how effective will we be to the community members to help decide? So, the first half of the thing is, we'll find the purpose of this. What we do, we start out at the, really, boots on the ground, looking, we're talking about the invasive Aedes here first. Looking at backyards, having seen good people on the yard, in the infested areas, trying to find where mosquitoes are breeding, and simply dumping cups, and then also getting rid of those containers, because they've talked about the fact that they lay eggs on the sides of these containers, we just try to remove them from the market. We may have to step it up, if there's adult mosquitoes in the backyard, we'll do some fogging in their backyard, and this is with their permission, we try to do the neighbors' houses as well, getting these adults controlled. But it's kind of, it's just a gradual, working our way up the chain of how we can provide vector management.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I read this non-responsive. The question was, what alternative methods could we consider for global eradication? Not what do you do, and which mosquitoes, but are there biological agents that you're considering, etc.?
I'm sorry, man, we're gonna keep this pretty short, because we have a lot of questions I know through, and I wanna make sure that we get to everyone's question.
There's an answer to that.
Not all wondering! What is the answer to that question?
Or there are no other methods, it's okay, you tell us that there's nothing else to try.
Of the two species involved here, the Asian tiger mosquito, and the Asian yellow tiger mosquito, there are some biological genetic methods that are being explored. One method involves genetic modification, certain gene that makes the offspring die. Now, that has met with a lot of opposition, by the way, in Florida, the pregnant kiddies that's in South Florida, they wanted to go through the standard approvals, FDA and EPA evaluation on it. They just completed, seem not at risk on it. The technique is still experimental on that. It's been tried in other parts of the world to suppress these mosquitoes. So this is again, sterile release of male, or release of sterile male, to suppress population by that technique. The other technique, which involves inserting a bacteria, that occurs in mosquitoes, and it turns out, at least, that then causes compatibility among the mosquitoes. The mosquitoes will have another strain of bacteria, they'll release male mosquitoes again, so we see male mosquitoes with this particular strain, and when they mate together, they lay sterile offspring. So that technique is still to be explored. We have an arrangement with the university sponsoring, the University of Kentucky. These are still exploratory, this technique has been used, a second technique has been used in Los Angeles, California, did, results are still tender on that. What it comes down to really is scalability. Now, for example, metaplan control, again, releases sterile male fowders. Getting that up to that level of scalability took many, many years to do that. And now that's been being used successfully in some California and Florida, where these metaplan's come in. Mosquitoes are tougher to deal with. Trying sterilizing radiation, the male mosquitoes die very easily, and also releasing them from airplanes, and mosquitoes, it's not as hard body, and as strong as other insects, such as the metaplan's. So, these techniques are being used, because the idea is, mosquitoes will find each other better than we can find them. So you can release sterile mosquitoes out there, then we hopefully can suppress the population by that way. Now, these were years and years of development, a lot, a lot of science behind this investigation to get this thing developed. And that just works for these two invasive mosquitoes. These techniques have not been worked out for regular West Nile virus carriers, or mosquitoes in the area. But it takes, takes a lot of science to get that to that point.
I'd really like to discuss some things that may happen in the future, but when we're talking about alternative methods under consideration, we're talking about things, some of which you're already doing, for example, elimination of standing water. Rather than discussing on something that could happen in the future, could you please address the question that was raised, about what alternative methods are being considered or being used, other than aerial spraying?
Our record for collecting data here forever since the agency has formed, but when we go to people's backyards, and we do this, people by and large do not change their behavior. There's either a certain amount of acceptance that they have about getting bitten, and their plants are more important, their plants are named, by the way, when we go to some people's backyards, their plants are named, and they're creating mosquitoes in the backyard. They have one level of tolerance, but the next door neighbor doesn't. And that's the thing that we have to face. Some of these things too, are beyond what you can do as a homeowner, they're infrastructure problems. Drainage problems, many places have drains running from the backyard or front door, when the mosquitoes breed in there, and there's no direct way that you can drop that water. There's always a certain amount of water that sits there. Now, in our other parts of the community, especially northern part, we have very poor drainage, some are drains that slopes about 1 to 2 feet per thousand feet, and we get tremendous backup of debris in there, and production of mosquitoes, which we have a problem, that's a real risk for our, for many of our West Nile virus mosquitoes. There are reports too, that these invasive mosquitoes are getting underground drainage, that's been reported in Mexico, and it's been reported in Italy. So this is gonna be just a... If they do that, the nuisance level, and the disease grip, and some of that will really skyrocket in this town.
So your answer is basically that the primary problem, standing water and mosquito breeding, is on private property, and it's...
And infrastructure, and infrastructure, okay. You just can't get that.
So you're saying that's impractical, to do others than aerial spraying?
As Laurie outlined, more than 99% of our efforts are controlled on the immature stages, through the egg, through the larva, and most stages. When the disease cycle gets going, at a certain point, if we have somebody coming in the neighborhood with dengue, they get bitten by mosquitoes, and several other people get infected with it, you get at a point where you have to kill the infected mosquito. And that technique is killing adult mosquitoes for adult society.
So you're concentrating on adult side, rather than larva side, or killing...
And at that point, the only thing that breaks the disease cycle is killing adult mosquitoes.
Okay, we have a few questions to get to, so I'm gonna try to speak as close as we can to put the questions on the table, and facilitate that as fast as we can, just so we, that we have a chance to hear what CMA says. The second part of that question was, how expected will we be to reach out to community members to help decide some internet? I went over a lot of those outreach strategies that the, that our agency uses, so hopefully that is enough. And if you want further details, a lot of information on our website, or you can contact any number of the communications department directly. Second question is, as a doctor in Mission Viejo, I'm more concerned about the dangers and health consequences of mass airborne spraying. What studies show that these chemicals are safe to people, adults can't read that, I wanna say it's kids, gardens, and food?
Could you reiterate that question, I'm used to a whole...
Sure. As a doctor in Mission Viejo, I'm more concerned about the dangers and health consequences of mass airborne spraying.
Could you just repeat that one?
Can we turn up the volume?
I can't hear the first, that first part.
I've heard it about times.
I believe everybody has heard, we're gonna move along, thank you. So that is probably...
Could she hear it?
Yeah, I can hear it.
I can hear it.
I mean, I'm trying to just...
Could you reenunciate a little bit too? Because it's muffled. Which food is putting poison on our families and children? Asking that a question repeated is not root, so someone can hear it, that is not root.
Yeah, you pull the eyebrow back.
I have a few health problems you might not be grappling with, so be a little decent.
Exactly. Yeah. Be a second round, I'll help you.
Say this one more time, hopefully, let me see all those things.
Okay, just let him know.
As a doctor, in Mission Viejo, okay, I'm more concerned about the dangers and health consequences of mass aerial spraying. What studies show that these chemicals are safe to people, kids, gardens, and food?
Everything we use is approved by US EPA, we go through quite a list, starting from top to finish.
That means nothing.
Our aerial spray, any of our products, no matter, any of our products we use against mosquitoes.
Tell us all about that.
Go through registration through FIPRO. US EPA, down through the state level, California EPA, Department of Test Drive regulations, and also our local county, Department of Agriculture. We also go through recommendations based on CDC, on guidance on the type of applications and methods on this, and when the use implied. And this is also through, on the state level, with Department of California Farm and Public Office, and our local county officer and health care.
Wait, that's... So... My EPA is kind of off par there. Exactly.
These are the, these may agencies that regulate us, and guide us, and...
So it's not tested, is what you're saying?
It's, it's of course tested, efficacy on regulations based upon test animals, insects, so...
So can we ask one question?
With Dr. John, well, maybe, maybe to comment on a couple of things. So, and so to get to the question of, as a physician, I am more worried about the effects of the spraying versus West Nile vaccines, okay? And just to make sure that we understand here, because I'm not sure it's totally clear, the vector control people can speak to this better than I can probably, but there's, what the response is to prevent the spread of West Nile versus the spread of Zika? Okay, because those are two, Q. likes is the West Nile mosquito, Zika is the Aedes mosquito, two different mosquitoes who behave very differently.
Well, who owns the pack of the secret, I mean, the Rockefeller's? So a lot of people are kind of...
Okay, just chill.
So, so it turns of, when, when, when is it worth it, right? When is it worth doing? So, the first thing I'd note is, a lot of this is given into this from 2014 in this county. In this county in 2014, we had 280 cases of West Nile virus in our county. What does that mean? Well, of those 280, 2/3 of them, 198 of them, as is every year if you have West Nile, 2/3 of them are people that have neurologic disease. Generally, that means insubtle life. And that means people who are overwhelmingly, they are hospitalized because their mental functions don't work right, okay? Now, the habit of neurologic disease like that is, over time, it tends to get better, but very often not completely. Of the persons who had 198 cases, 9 of them died, they never got better, okay? For the, for those 198 cases, many of them did improve. Now, I can point out also that when you're talking about those 200 cases of, 198 cases of neurologic disease, they were all over the county, okay? They were extremely centered towards Santa Ana, Anaheim, Fullerton, those areas, and those in Tuscaloosa, right? So, when you ask me, okay, in public health, do we support aerial spraying? In the right situations, yes, but it's gotta be in the right situations. What are those situations? Well, communities have to have evidence that you have the mosquito with the virus in your community, so you gotta have that first. Number two, you have to have evidence that people are actually getting sick, okay? So, when the question comes up, do we, do we support aerial spraying? Well, it's always a stepwise report, you know, process, and maybe don't start with aerial spraying. We would never support, the first day, no, we're gonna start with aerial spraying.
We're just trying to ask the question, is it safe?
Right. So, so the other side, so the other side, the question of it's safe. So the two, the two bigger studies that they're looking at, okay? In New York City in 2000, the first year that West Nile was a big deal, there was a lot of aerial spraying in that community, okay? It was done pretty consistently. And what, they, they looked at evidence for emergency room visits, and they looked at basically 60,000 emergency room visits, because they collected data from all the hospitals and all of them. And they looked in the, in the city, and they looked to see if there are evidence of any increase in any kinds of illness, respiratory illness, asthma in particular, neurologic illness for people. Didn't see any change or see evidence of that at all, on a community-wide basis, okay? So, that's, that's the first.
How about human cancer?
And birth defects.
And...
Human diseases.
So...
Sir, can I stand up and say something? I just have to say this. My husband was extremely sick after Christmas. He went into the mission hospital with the flu. He was in there for almost a week, almost died. I talked to a nurse there that said she has never seen such upper respiratory issues in the last two years, ever, since the last two years. She says 85% of the people come into the ER are with upper respiratory issues, so don't tell me that there are no issues.
We have the chemical, it's the chemical, it's the chemical.
Not aerial, but we have done...
I can only answer...
We're spraying up and down the streets, I have stopped the trucks, I have talked to the guys, we're...
You did do it in the last three years.
You were talking about the spraying with the...
But that really hasn't changed over the last seven... That hasn't changed over the last seven years.
It's increased. So you can see in everybody how...
So the other, the other, the other study where they looked at is that in three different states in the year 2003, in Virginia, in North Carolina, and in Mississippi. The CDC surveyed people in communities and they did, and this is not a big survey, okay, be clear. About a hundred people in each, in each state. What they did was, they, they, when you get exposed to perivitrite type treatment, you excrete it in your urine. So they tested everybody. They looked at their urine to find that they have evidence of these...
Except the people that have MTHFR. I do not, I am an MTHFRer, I'm sorry, I disagree. I do not excrete these toxins. They accumulate in my body and I get very sick.
And they have done tests on mother's breast milk and they are finding glyca, traces of glyphosate, so don't say they are not.
So what they, what they found for people is, one, before aerial spraying occurred in these communities, people had evidence of it in their urine. After aerial spraying, there really wasn't evidence that there was more of it in people's urine. People who had higher rates pretty consistently were people who ate fresh grilled fruits and vegetables. More fresh fruits and vegetables you ate, the better chance you are that you'd have, at some point, you'd have some evidence.
And I eat organic, but how am I gonna do that now, sir? That's what we're worried about.
Well, I think that when you're talking about anything, the amount that you are exposed to is tremendously important, anything. Whether you're talking about aerial spraying, when you're talking about pervisment, you're talking about antibiotics, whether you're talking about anything. And the, the evidence that we have, both logically, both in terms of every study we've shown, is that the amount of, of exposure that people are undergoing here simply isn't changed by aerial spraying. There just isn't the large enough load to do that. And, you know, all we, all we do is...
We're trying to clean up the environment and our food systems, sir. We have more cancer than ever, ever.
You're addressing the West Nile virus and I think very clearly, and you're talking about the mosquito record control problems with West Nile, but you yourself did say that we're talking about two different kinds of mosquitoes, Zika and West Nile virus. But all of the evidence that you're talking about is about gathering mosquitoes, typing mosquitoes with West Nile virus. And the other thing is, when you're testing people to determine whether or not there's any, there's any increase in the pesticides in their urine or otherwise, if we don't know necessarily where these samples were drawn. For example, in the food and water prices, people were very careful initially. The county was testing people who were unlikely to be the ones most affected by the lead and copper content in the pipe. I don't know anything about the studies you're talking about. The doctor who raised the question had me asked for, for a referral to the specific studies that were used. And I still don't think we've done that, but we've done half of the job of talking about West Nile virus. Aren't we addressing Zika? And that's the reason for the aerial spraying, because of the Zika.
No, no.
So do we vote?
No, I mean, and they can talk to it more, but Zika, Zika operates differently. Again, the mosquitoes are different. So the way that aerial spraying for that is, it's, it's, it's not, it's not effective. It doesn't work, right? And I mean, so we wouldn't support it versus Zika.
That's what your website says, that the meeting was originally about.
Let me address that a little bit. The meeting was really too cold. I think a lot of people have interest in Zika, of course, and that was the main thrust. But a lot of people are here opting and wanting us to talk about aerial spraying. And so I brought that up as a general thing as, as it relates to the Q likes mosquitoes and spreading West Nile virus.
So you just said that the aerial spraying won't work for the Zika virus, the mosquitoes that carry Zika virus, right? So if there's a Zika virus outbreak or something, aerial spraying will not work. That's what you just said, right? I just...
So you're not serious, right?
Yeah.
But I just wanna clarify.
Yeah, so, so, so of course I will caveat everything, because I work with the government. Okay, but I will tell you that, that, you know, when we're...
You said not me.
Yeah, no, but the same, we will never do aerial spraying. Okay, that was a big word. But in terms of what's been done around the country, when I support aerial spraying, it's based on evidence that Q likes mosquitoes and West Nile are affected by that, not by the Aedes. I mean, they were, they were saying, I don't know how clearly we can make it, overwhelmingly, the goal in terms of preventing the spread of Aedes is going to be house to house, neighbor to neighbor, your area. We, I, you know, I wish I had a, a, an easy silver bullet way, community-wide to keep people, but we don't. It does, Aedes just doesn't work that way. So it's, and I think, and I will say to my side, I've talked to them, you know, coming to this meeting, there's gonna be a confusion here, because I know everybody's thinking that because we're talking about Zika, that's a reason that we're gonna be going to aerial spraying. What I say, absolutely never know, but that's two different things, way two different things. West Nile and concerns of that aspect.
You know, I think I speak for everybody here, and I just wanna say something, I help everyone. And that is that I think predominantly I can say that most people aren't here to know, are we gonna have it happen or not? Really, it's like three questions. Are we gonna take it or not? Have you done everything? Tried soybean oil? Tried backwoods that chop them up at night when they're high? Have you tried everything non-toxic? This is the OC. This is Orange County. We've got incredible intelligence in this, in this room, in my friends. I will tell you, I was here last September. I followed everything. I'm a mother. I also have MTHFR issues with my children. I love organic gardening. I love clean air, and I am having a difficult time in Orange County as a result of the accumulations, not only in my body, but what you're putting on our earth. So if you don't mind, I would appreciate if you'd simply address the simple, near question of, number one, is it gonna happen? What would that be like? How's that gonna happen? How much notification do we have to cover our horses, our pigs, our koi fish, our gardens, our food? I have a permit with a tortoise. I can't even have my tortoise if you guys spray. Because I agree, the assignment thing that says I will always provide them organic food to eat, and now my aerial rights are being taken away, I believe, and I'm not an attorney, nor am I a doctor. I so appreciate all your time tonight, but I would like to make, if you could... Yes, those questions are important, but some of them possibly are redundant. Can you just tell us, are we gonna get sprayed, number one? Number two, has it been tested on humans? Because I love my kids so much, but I love your kids. I want your kids to not be killed. I'm battling issues right now, being looked upon by my mom's poor cancer. It's a scary thing. So I just wanna know, guys, do I have to leave Southern California? Do I have to go to Alaska?
And what are you doing right now to prevent that from happening in September? The education is key, and I don't think I've seen any change in your program for education. And we have been volunteering our time, and we have been saying, we will be here boots on the ground if you don't have...
Yeah, I've got access to twenty thousand women in five minutes on Facebook. And some of them love us, and I offer free services. I told you, I'd go educate for you. I would do boots on the ground, and I've never gotten a notification. Not one time did you say, can, this is what we wanna do.
I don't know what you're...
In the respect of the process, to, to your point, okay, if, if, we'll address those two questions, and I'm, clearly, there's gonna be a lot of redundancy in the, in the questions that I have before me. So in the interest of, there are, there are many other people in the audience that have different concerns, different questions, and that I have, I have looked through, so I really wanted to get them to see me, and well, so let's knock off those two questions right now, and if it's in progress with the group, then I'm gonna do this next.
But you have to do the question.
I know, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take them off, and leave them with the group. You know, it's a democratic process. We're gonna address those two questions, and I'm gonna remove the questions that are pertinent to those and the rest of the pile, and we're gonna move on with this process, because this is about education. This is about you guys getting the information that you came here for. Raise your hands, are you gonna do that?
Okay.
True, yeah.
Right. We're gonna answer those two questions, and then I'm gonna remove the very similar questions for the, so we can move on.
Based on parameters, it has to do with infection rate of our mosquitoes. They rise and getting very high like they did in 2014. It's still an option which we want to consider. As far as regarding outbreaks, disease outbreaks of Zika or dengue and chicken guinea, error options is probably not there. Probably spot treatment would be, meaning around the neighborhood, around the block of those community cases. The reason on that, these mosquitoes will become infected if they, if we have these right invasive Aedes in the neighborhood, and we pick up invasive Aedes there that test positive in the neighborhood. They don't fly very far, generally a hundred yards or so, and we could do some very intensive spot treatment of adult society, usually on the ground, boots on the ground, backpack, to try to kill as many adult mosquitoes as we can. Infected adult female mosquitoes. That will be an option that we have to explore. We don't want to see a cycle of dengue fever taking off in this county. And that's, that would be the action. Now, that would be ground-based, large amounts on the ground, silver approach. Again, if the parameters are with our other group of mosquitoes, up in, with high infection rates in that, aerospray is still an option. It's what we have to do as an agency that the public health, well, vector-borne diseases in this county.
What is, what is the probability of dengue fever taking off in this county?
It's still not hot. We agree it's not hot. But these things can take off, just because, not so much this year. We're seeing these populations of these Aedes mosquitoes build up. Fresno County, parts of that, it's really, they've had it several years before. It's really taking off there. They have nuisance levels up to two hundred mosquitoes they can catch in a trap in one night. We're in handfuls right now. So we're not there yet, but we expect that these numbers will grow very high, because our average backyard is conducive to these mosquitoes, and they exploit all of the available.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to stay on topic, but, but like you said, it's infrastructure. You said it's infrastructure is a big issue. So why are we not being a progressive, innovative city and county? And do something with infrastructure?
I'm telling myself and tell them they have to clean the water off the top of their roofs, because I know this is a big issue.
Well, we've tried getting homeowners, this message has been going out for, for as long as we've been...
But, but homeowners...
Well, it's on our website, this information always... Jared Eager has always put out this message. It's been through various media outlets that he's used on this sort of thing. This is, but this is...
This is a great notable scientist, he's at the Harvard, and also the one that care, Franklin. And they said it's just a matter of time that mosquitoes will change, because they'll carry, like, AIDS virus.
No, no, no. That's been well-tested. These things are, they're called arboviruses, arbovirus viruses. It's a reason for that mosquito has to be able to survive, sorry, the virus has to be able to survive the mosquito. Not every virus, not by far, not at all. Yeah, oh, so many other viruses, flu, whatever. These things are not carried by mosquitoes. They have to survive in a mosquito-laden, be trapped in. Very complicated, very narrow grade group of mosquitoes that, very narrow group of viruses that can do that. But these things have, as I mentioned, they have these animal origins, and they've been in through the, really, the canopies of the coastal areas where these things come from, and on the seed of the World War trade, and movement people have spread all around the world. I think we got some other questions to address. What's the second?
And so the second part of your question was, I believe that was on, that Thomas in his previous... Who's right and power to schedule the aerial outside application when it was deemed necessary? We've been, when there's next bird in April, that aside, if we move in April, we will have gone through all these town hall meetings. We'll have heard from you, the public. We will have gathered your responses and your sentiment regarding that, this application. So that was the reason why, in which the agenda is in agreement.
So when will the public comment?
And how do you comment? I'm confused.
And when will the public comment happen?
Right now. Tell me, this is a great home forum for submitting your comments.
But technically, we're writing questions to you, the way that you'd like the process to work. But, you know, normally a board meeting has public comment periods. Obviously, that's a different venue than this. But there's a lot of public, obviously, that wanna comment. When will that happen?
And we have such a short time with the, with the room, we just wanna structure this the way that we can get through as many of the questions and concerns we possibly can, roll them to the public. And a three-minute comment window, W and R, we're actually, almost at the time, we've got a very narrow window with this one.
So when and how will you collect public comments on it?
We hope we have a, we have a fantastic start, right in front of me. There's a large stack of questions and concerns that are expressed in these questions. And I wanna note that if we can't get to these questions today that are specifically addressed here, our staff is gonna take these back, and for those of you who provide contact information on your questions, we will email those questions to you or whatever way that you, you... Are you decision makers? Are you guys the decision makers?
No, exactly, decision makers.
Okay, so that's, I'm just wondering why we're not talking to decision makers, right, instead of...
Or some of the board members.
Well, we're government board of trustees.
Are those the...
What, are they, and Jared, did he answer the question?
Put them on your Facebook now.
Yeah, I guess I'll find them on the internet. Thanks.
Only roughly five...
The gentleman, the manager, and then these two are board members. So I, I don't know if you guys are staying active, but it'd be great if you guys could talk to the community. One-on-one, especially, are you the secretary?
Yes, I am.
Yes, because I know you feel that this is completely safe and more hysterical.
Well, I think they're helping me, but... Yeah, I'm a board member of the hills, and I'm also a bit of vector control for just about three years in my signature, which is, which is in the executive committee. There's a lot of misinformation, I think. Number one, a lot of people here think we have been spraying, we've never sprayed in our, aerial sprayed in Orange County, never have in Orange County. When the indicators were such that we were perhaps gonna have this data breakout in fifteen that we had in fourteen, where we had people dying and everything else, then we had a very short window, we were going to spray in a very confined area, which is Anaheim, Garderoe, Fullerton, Tuscaloosa, very confined area, where there were clusters of West Nile lyres. That didn't happen because of an FAA problem, Disneyland has fly over since nine eleven. So it didn't happen, so we never sprayed in Orange County. We have...
The white restriction.
White restriction.
Because of Disneyland.
No, Disneyland was fine with it.
I'm sorry I made a rough people. With all due respect, there were five cases when we made the decision to spray, it's that term of five, sure. Five cases. I just looked up an article, O.C. register, an eighteenth, there were, there were thirty, there were twenty second total name. Is that an emergency?
Well, I wanna make a few points, okay?
But you, you just said there was fear of death. Five cases were diagnosed in September when you decided to spray.
When you know I will do that.
Yes, that is correct. Five cases.
May I just make a couple of points? Number one, we have not sprayed in Orange County. A lot of people...
I understand, but you said the decision was made because of, of emergency and people were gonna die.
Number two, you asked about information. There are many links on the website that I would suggest you follow those links to peer-reviewed scientific studies.
We have peer-reviewed studies that prove...
Okay, there's a lot of information on the website. I would appreciate it if you really have a passionate opinion or passion interest, check that out as well.
What are the parameters to spray in the future? Five cases?
Our passionate interest is our families and our children, and our entire...
What qualifies as, as an emergency, to spray? Answer that question.
Yeah, that would be a good one, you guys.
What we've learned over the years is inspection rating mosquitoes. And when we hit a certain threshold, it's a mathematical calculation.
What's the calculation? What's the calculation? Cause you said so yourself, and many means you have no idea how many are gonna happen from year to year. You said that several times.
I know that. The thing is, when we see the inspection rate get above a certain threshold, we have learned this...
Five cases?
There was, thus one was known of at the time, the thing is, people... In August, it takes about three weeks for a person to have that, their diagnosis, wind its way through the healthcare system. We ended up with ninety-seven infections and eight deaths last year.
They were very mean, but...
Ninety-seven, yeah, let's figure it out. Infections and eight deaths. And our year was two hundred and eighty infections and nine deaths, so seventeen. We've been up...
What's the percentage of population on that, point zero 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 percent?
Well, we look at, there are, there are certain agencies, but we are charged as an agency with protecting the public health, vector-borne...
That's not a public health issue.
So is it five cases? You've already set that precedent. Is that what you're...
Based on the infection rate in the mosquito, knowing when the mosquito says a certain threshold, and when we set traps around the county, and the mosquitoes from the traps in various locations, we set around a hundred a week, and when they all start tripping, and all showing that they're positive West Nile virus, we know that the chance of people getting infected is very high.
That's an assumption. That's not a fact.
No, we have the data on it showing the rise of infection rate in mosquitoes will be a lead to a rise in human cases. Twenty-fourteen.
My fear is you would have sprayed last year, and you went, oh God, thank God, there are only ninety-eight cases.
No.
Yeah.
We would gauge it by the drop.
You just, you just said, thank God, we sprayed, really had ninety-eight cases.
No, it would be gauged by the drop in infection... No, it would be gauged by the drop in infection rates in mosquitoes as for evaluation of efficacy. Infection rate drops in mosquitoes, human cases drop with it. This is a routine procedure done in many other parts of the country. Northern California went through this, and especially Sacramento, where 2014, they had similar parameters to us. They ended up with 10 cases in Sacramento, we ended up with 208. They had similar numbers of dead birds test positive for West Nile virus, and similar number of mosquitoes test positive for West Nile virus.
You said that something was safe, and you found out later it wasn't.
Science deals with probabilities.
You guys have...
And based upon...
A probability is an assumption.
And then we're not...
Probabilities that the, the...
That is not fact.
...carotestosterone is, has extremely low risk.
You guys panicked last year.
You guys have cancer.
You guys panicked last year.
Well, one, one of the things is, the tremendous change in regulations, EPA was not, was not formed until 1972, many of the regulations, guarding FIPRA, all these other regulations that do come and out were created since that time. Regulations of pesticides, usually many things we use are actually agricultural products spun off into public health purposes. These things lead to many, there's many years of testing and use of these things before they turn off.
Have you... So we don't feel like being tested on the city of our life?
No, I think we, I think we got to get back to...
We only use organic test flights on the city of our life, is that true?
Somebody is asking us to wrap up. We only had the room actually until 8:00, and they need to clean up.
There's a few...
There's, there's...
But this is true. We are now...
Yeah, we're, we're, we want to keep it going. So, but we have a lot of questions on the table, unfortunately, we are in this room. We, you know, specifically addressing, is your voice heard with the board? Is your voice heard with the district manager, and, and those who are in the, in the position